A C P President Ms Brenda C Murphy. We also have Brother Rick Wade, Senator Marlin Kimson. We also had um uh North Carolina Candidates Forum featuring Sherri Beasley, a candidate for the Supreme Court Justice of North Carolina. We had the Lieutenant Governor of Ms Yvonne Holly, um who's a candidate for that position. And also, we had Brother Marcus Singleton, a candidate for North Carolina State House. And then following them, uh this past Tuesday, we had Representative Joe Cunningham. Um he was on and also shared a spotlight with Candidate Jamie Harrison, who's running against Senator Lindsey Graham. So we had a wonderful night of events. But first, before we go any further, I would like to call our District Chaplain to lead us in a word of prayer.
All your hands, brothers, with me, please. May the work I've done speak for me. May the service I give speak for me. May the life that I live speak for me. Dear Supreme Bosilus and the universe, we humbly bow in invocation, asking your blessings upon the empowerment series Town Hall with our illustrious and highly sought after Grand Counselor Brother Benjamin L. Crump, whose life's work is summed up in the previous words of that old gospel song. His works truly speak for him. We thank you for his life, his talent, his scholarship, and his compassion. Lord, he hails from the mighty Sixth District and he represents Omega in world-class fashion. Bless this assembly in every question, comment, concern, and antidote that shall come before this forum tonight. Bless our District Representative Brother Kurt Walker and his contemporaries who will preside over this panel. We ask all these blessings in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'm gonna move quick because we have joining us tonight. Uh you've seen him earlier on one of our panels, Brother Tony Clyburn from the Sigma Pi chapter. He's gonna help out later this evening. But without further ado, I want to bring our host tonight forward, Attorney Carl Solomon from the city of Columbia, South Carolina. Thank you, Brother Solomon.
Brother D R, it's a pleasure to be here and thank you for putting this together. Um we have the pleasure of having our Grand Counselor Brother Benjamin Crump with us this evening. Uh Brother Crump's been on the airwaves since about six o'clock this morning. Um and he is going to have to leave us momentarily from about seven thirteen, seven twenty-two because he'll be on M S N B C with Joy Reid, trying to encourage people to get justice for Breonna Taylor. Uh Brother Crump, I want to jump right in with you because we only have a few minutes to start. For those that are on this call, can you tell us how Breonna's family is taking the information that they got regarding the indictment? And kind of how things stand in Louisville?
Certainly, Brother Solomon, and thank you to the District Representative Brother Kurt Walker, who uh I'm just so proud to see his evolution and his great leadership in Omega. And to Brother Clyburn, Brother Alexander, and all the leadership of the Sixth District. So grateful to be here. And Carl Solomon, I know we rushing, but I can't not let people know that you're one of the best lawyers in America, bar none. And I put you up against anybody. And that's how, but how good I feel, Kurt, about that fellow there.
Very well, thank you.
And uh and and I apologize for about, you know, seven, eight minutes. And I'ma still sit here, y'all can listen in if you want, Kurt, while I do the interview with Joy Reid. And then we'll come right back and y'all will hear more about Breonna. And then at eight o'clock, I'mma do Anderson Cooper. I'm just have another laptop here because Omega is uh my foundation. And I know the good white folks in mainstream media want to hear from me, but you all are what I was committed to. And but not for the cause for justice for Breonna Taylor. I wouldn't entertain those interviews. But we have to educate Brother Solomon, as you know, engage and empower our people because Breonna Taylor's life matters and black women's lives matter. And Breonna Taylor's family is devastated. I mean, they are outraged. They are heartbroken. Uh because when you think of the charges that were returned from this grand jury, they're asinine. I mean, it's ludicrous. Wanting endangerment for the apartment next door to her, where her white neighbors were, had bullets come into their apartment, but no wanting endangerment charges for her black neighbors who lived above her, where bullet went into their house. And no wanting endangerment charges, Brother D R, for the bullets that went into Breonna Taylor's house, where they were shooting blindly and recklessly from outside to inside. Uh y'all, let me just get off with uh those people, don't worry about it. We uh Carl Kelly, tell them to call y'all other number. We with you, Brother Crump? That's M S N B C. But uh one of the things I was gonna say, Carl, and they may call back. I just uh get them uh done again because we're trying to put them on another computer. Carl Kelly. All right. Carl, Carl Kelly, tell them to call M S N B C. Tell. Okay, but call them, okay. Um and so not the wanting endangerment for bullets going into her apartment, Brother Solomon, and not even wanting murder charges for the bullets that went inside of Breonna Taylor's body. And so what we are questioning is what did the Kentucky Attorney General, Daniel Cameron, tell the grand jury? What evidence did he present? Did he present any evidence for Breonna Taylor? And you know, did he present anything where her voice could be heard in that grand jury proceeding? Because if he did not, then he made a unilateral decision to put his thumbs on the scales of justice and to exonerate those killer cops for killing this black woman in the sanctity of her own apartment. Hold one second.
And this is sort of.
They set it up for another computer. Uh hold on, hold on, listen, listen. It's not gonna be on this computer.
I've mentioned it to them and I've.
They call.
Thinking about it too. I just don't think this is the right time.
Hold on, listen.
Strategies and approaches.
Listen, what's going on?
Appointment of a letter is one of the options. It's one of the available legal options.
They said they got another Skype for you to call it on.
Republicans would want you to write about that and for us to be talking about.
Text or email. Another Skype. They emailed and they texted to you all.
But how real is this idea?
This is just the day in the life of uh Benjamin Crump, my brother. We stand in love in this person. Okay, because this, this is gonna die, okay? So call the other number.
They're never gonna tell themselves and tell you.
All right.
Uh and when you go on national TV, they obviously want you to be on a little bit early. Uh check, so we understand why they're calling you. We appreciate you giving us priority.
Absolutely. Um and so, you know, we gonna get into a lot of detail. And you'll hear us talking to Joy Reid in just a minute about all the things that this black Republican Mitch McConnell's protege, Kentucky Attorney General, did not give the grand jury. You know, if they wanted to, they can indict a ham sandwich. The grand jury is gonna do whatever the prosecutor tells them to do because they the only lawyer in the room. They the only one who got the evidence. So if they want an indictment, they would get an indictment. If they don't want an indictment, they won't get an indictment. The prosecutor ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time gets an indictment when they go before the grand jury. It's only when it is a white police officer accused of killing a person of color that they now have a problem getting an indictment. And that is because when I continue to argue, Brother Clyburn, there are two justice systems that operate in America. One for black America, one for white America. We saw it in Jacob Blake's situation in uh Kenosha, Wisconsin, when he was shot seven times in the back in front of his three little boys, ages eight years old, five years old, and three years old. Then we saw it again with Philando Castile, this very thing. Okay, we said, all right. So y'all, uh Carl, y'all can keep talking, but y'all gonna listen in while I'm doing this with Joy Reid. And y'all will be able to gleam a lot of what we are doing with uh this case involving Breonna Taylor.
Sounds good. Brother Clyburn, while Brother Crump is transitioning over, a lot of people always ask about the differences between political justice, civil justice, and criminal indictments. One of the things that kind of runs in between that is how important it is to be involved politically locally so that your DAs, your sheriffs, the people that do the investigations are all accountable to you. Can you talk just a little bit about how you think people ought to get involved locally and making sure their vote is heard there and their voice is heard there as well?
Sure, sure. First of all, um a lot of people like to concentrate on the national politics because it's what uh leads the day when it comes to the news cycle. However, uh because of that star power of our national.
Thank you.
Politicians, but um our local politicians, our local leaders are the ones who make the decisions. And they're the ones who make the decisions as far as indictments, uh as far as um you know, your local sheriff, your local mayor, you know, appointed police chiefs. Those are the ones who make the decisions that affect our daily lives. And those are the people that we know personally. So we should have a lot more input in our local governments. We should be really taking charge of electing local officials that can take charge of our, of our justice. And and it's just that simple. I don't know how much more simple we can make it.
You want to turn to M S N B C?
Absolutely. Um and one thing that I don't think people understand is when Brother Crump sits in and there's been a hall of tragedy and stands with the family, there are lots of things he can do. He can bring political attention. He can bring attention when it comes to the media. But he doesn't get to go in the room and work with the grand jury.
Yes, that that's correct. And and I think a lot of people need to understand that about Brother Crump. You know, his job is not to bring the indictment. His job is to bring attention to the case and and to help, you know, for the civil case. But it is up to whatever prosecuting attorney you have, whether it's a DA, the the Attorney General, the solicitor, it's up to them to present to the grand jury. And and they need to present that in a way that, that aggressively, as if they really want to get an indictment. That is what, that is what their job is. Brother Crump does his job. He does it effectively. He does it, you know, for everyone he's ever represented. It's just that there are, in a lot of these different jurisdictions, you have local officials that do not share in 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 what we want as far as justice. You know, a good, a good example is down in Georgia with um the Ahmaud Arbery case. Now you have a whole system of corruption there from the DA to the the sheriff. And then it was not even police officers that got away with it. Just vigilantes, friends of the police officers, friends of the DA. So you have a whole system there. And that all starts locally. And it's not something that, you know, a civil attorney can really get into. That's something that they can bring light to, but they cannot, they don't have their foot on that scale. They don't, they're not able to actually.
Where yourself?
So um I think it is important that, that everyone realizes what Brother Crump's job is.
Honored to be here. Thank you.
Bring attention to the case. His job is to get justice as far as the civil case is concerned. It is up to us as local voters. To vote in those DAs, those solicitors, you know, those.
Sounds good, thank you.
Who will actually bring the case to a grand jury effectively. That's our job as local citizens. So yes, uh you know, my hats off to Brother Crump.
I can hear you just fine, can you hear me?
Nationwide, for everyone he's represented and the and the attention he's brought to social justice in this country.
Absolutely. Uh for all of those who may have joined lately, we're here today with Ben Crump talking about social action and social justice with the Sixth District. Uh unlike some other uh media outlets to get a hold to him, when the bros call, you get full access. While it sounds like things may be a little chaotic, what uh Brother Crump is allowing us to do is to see how he affects the media and keeps the pressure on people to try to get justice for African Americans. So for those of you that may not have heard, um he is on with us and will be back engaged with us at seven twenty-two. At this time, he is on with Joy Reid on M S N B C. And when they begin the interview, we'll be able to see a behind the scenes look of the answers that he gives on national TV. Um while we're doing this, Brother D R, um in terms of any events that are going on between now and time of the election, piggybacking on what Brother Clyburn just talked about, will Mu Alpha or other parts of the Sixth District be doing any things related to the election?
Sure. Right now, we are a a part of the big push of the um presidential campaigns in terms of early voting um strategies. And we are trying to get all of our people to early vote if at all possible. We realize that a lot of our demographic is going to be affected uh or impacted by the result of the coronavirus. And so we, we're asking of people to get their family members, if at all possible, to vote early. And so we're gonna have several chapters throughout the district uh engage in promoting those activities in terms of early voting because of course, the the uh registration, early uh registration period is now phasing over to now the early voting period. And so that's what we're gonna be pushing everybody to do. We've already been warned that uh most of the poll watchers are in that older uh age group. And so they, they, we have been told that we can anticipate that many of them will be staying home because of COVID nineteen. And so we're also asking, you know, the brothers who are of a younger age to really consider uh uh participating and being pollsters for this upcoming election. Because we, we gonna, you know, not take anything for granted. And we want to protect that right to vote in terms of the day of the election.
Understood. And for those who did not see uh Brother Kimson when he was on, South Carolina did pass a law extending early voting without having to have any excuse or reason. Uh begins October the fifth, runs through November the third. In his words, he wants to have a tailgate party for an entire month. Make sure everybody gets out there and votes. And I know the brothers were having some uh impact and some input into getting people out there and getting them educated about that. Um that is absolutely one of the things that's most important to this social justice component. Um Brother Clyburn, I don't know how much you've looked at it. And if you'd like for me to talk about it a second, I will. Uh but can you give us what your take is on the indictments involving the Breonna Taylor case? And just kind of what you have seen coming out of Louisville?
I I think it's pathetic. Um it's pathetic uh for the simple reason that it just seems as though the grand jury either did not consider or was not presented facts that are pretty common knowledge. Uh facts that um the vast majority of people who were witnesses did not hear the police announce themselves. But yet, they take the word of one, from what I hear, one witness who was questioned more than once to finally say, well, I did hear them announce themselves. You know, so to consider the fact that you take the word of one over the rest of them, uh that's one thing. Another thing is just some of the protocol that they did not follow when it comes to the no knock warrant. Um you know, we all have heard about the lack of a a a uniformed officer, the lack of ambulance. Um and it's just so many other things, the the inconsistencies in the stories. To me, it seems as though this Attorney General um did everything he could to give them the benefit of the doubt. Everything that the 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 Police Department declared at whatever time that was favorable, favorable to them is something that he ran with. And so um it it goes to show that he just did not want an indictment. You know, he did not want to have to prosecute these officers. So he presented the grand jury with what he wanted to present them with. So that that's what I feel about the indictment. And I think, you know, I don't think it's over. I I think there are some things that we can look at uh down the road. And Brother Crump can can elaborate on that. But you know, what we saw today, yesterday, was just, it it was just not justice in any way. And and we can't even, can't even call that justice. So yes, people have the right to be angry about that. You know, it it's been too long where we feel like our lives can be taken. And all they have to do is just sign a few papers, make a few statements, and someone in some office, whether the AG or the DA, is gonna cover for them. And and that's just not justice. And I don't know how, I mean, I don't know how more playing you can put it. What we saw yesterday was not justice, period.
And you know, when I look at these things, I try to look at them both with my heart because as an African American man, you you always gotta do, but you also gotta go look at it with your head. So I started researching at about five in the morning statutes in Kentucky. And there are several statutes, including uh manslaughter one and manslaughter two that I think would absolutely fit as well as wanting murder. And when I looked at the uh manslaughter two statute, it actually used the wanted endangerment information, the actual same language, and says, when you wantonly endanger somebody and it results in death, that is manslaughter two. So that makes me very curious as well. Not only did he not go for the higher charges, but did he present any of the information regarding that? Because the exact same language that he used to indict the gentleman from outside from shooting into the apartment next door applied to the death of Breonna Taylor and a significant charge related to that. Now I do think higher charges were appropriate as well, but that one was just glaring because if you gave them wanted endangerment facts that they found on one officer regarding the shooting, they should have also found at least against that same officer, wanting endangerment resulting in death, which is manslaughter two.
Right, right. It it's just like, it's like indicting someone for breaking but not entering. I mean, you know, you know, I just don't understand what he felt um that he was gonna get over on everyone, basically. I mean, you know, he, it's it's as if he presented these things. And 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 you better believe, there's some people who support him who, and support, blindly support uh uh those officers who are gonna take the information he gives and the lack of information he gives. And they're going to run with it and they're going to put that as part of their talking points. So you know, he, he's done what, he's done his job according to them. He's done what he's supposed to have done. He 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 found a way to to get the officers to get the least amount of charges they can get. But I tell you, it it just seems so cut and dry, some of the things that, that that he presented. And I I just don't understand how he could really stand there and just, and tell us that, yes, it's wanting endangerment but not wanting murder. I I just don't understand that.
So part of what we're gonna do when Brother Crump comes back is talk about, how do we take anger to action? How do we go from having these horrible moments when everyone wants to act to having some systemic change so that we don't have to have these moment, moments going in the future? Part of what I was talking to several colleagues about was they can talk about what happens as an indictment and a criminal charge under the law. Part of what we've got to do is affect the law and the policy so they're not there with those no knock warrants for these type of shots to be fired. You know, once you get them in the apartment, if something goes wrong, the cost is so high, we gotta keep them out. Part of that needs to be political, part of that needs to be strategic. Uh in doing that, there're gonna be some good resources where people can go and educate themselves. Uh the city of Columbia has been blessed. We've got a mayor and a police department and a city council that listened to Barack Obama's task force on Twenty-First Century Community Policing. And they implemented almost all of the suggestions that were made in full. And the last one that was not implemented in full was implemented in part. What happens? More transparency, less of these incidents. You can never say get rid of all of them, but less of these incidents. And the ability for the department to be held accountable when things happen. For those that live in cities where that habit happened, they've got to educate themselves on, once we march, what do we ask for? So there's a website called The Eight That Can't Wait. It encompasses several of those things that Barack Obama's task force talked about. And there are great resources on the ACLU websites about policing, et cetera. Brother Crump, we appreciate you allowing us to get that behind the scenes view of what it looks like to do national television interviews. Uh we want to talk about social justice um fully, but obviously, the issues with the Breonna Taylor case predominated the moment. Part of what people don't understand is the type of reform that is necessary not to have these issues. I know there was a settlement and everybody talks about the money, and that is very important for the family. But there were also reforms that were requested and agreed to. Can you talk to us about the types of police reforms that are necessary to make these things better?
Absolutely, Attorney Solomon. And uh you know, last week, it was this historic landmark settlement in the silver matter and a pretrial resolution to that aspect of the case. Because remember, there are two forms of justice in America that you can arrive at. Civil justice, where people like Attorney Solomon and I, who are private lawyers, we are allowed to go and fight to make sure the family is compensated for the loss. And then criminal justice, which an elected official is uh the only people who can arrest and take away somebody's liberty and put them in prison. That is what we were relying on, the black Republican Attorney General in Kentucky to do, which he uh advocated his duties and did not do them. So where Attorney Solomon is talking about in that historic settlement where they paid twelve million dollars out to a black woman, one of the largest amounts ever paid in the history of America in regards to a wrongful death involving a police shooting. Uh and we set a precedence, really, Carl, in many ways, to help raise the value of black women's lives in America because oftentimes, they are disrespected and marginalized, not only by society, but also in courts of law. And so that was significant in many ways. When we think about Sandra Bland, family only got a million dollars. Uh a seven-year-old Ayanna Stanley in Detroit, Michigan, who was killed as a result of a dangerous no knock warrant uh execution, only got a million dollars. Natasha McKennie, the sister who was in the jail in Virginia in her underwear, her T-shirt and her panties, and got tased twelve times. And it was captured on video. Her family only recovered a million dollars. So hopefully, with Breonna Taylor's uh precedent set in settlement, it will raise the value for all women's lives, especially black women in America. But equally important was the systematic reform that was part of the settlement. And this was important to Breonna Taylor's family, just as important as the money. And in many ways, more important, her mother, Tamika Palmer, said, because she literally said that she is concerned about the legacy of her daughter and defining what that legacy would be. And Brother Clyburn, she said, that legacy is to help prevent future Breonna Taylors from happening. And that's why, when you look at this reform, Brother D R Walker, and I mean, it is a model that can be used for other cities, whether it's Minneapolis, Minnesota, where George Floyd had the knee on his neck, whether it's Los Angeles, California, where Dejai Kidzy was shot fifteen times in the back for driving a bicycle while black three weeks ago, whether it was Trayford Pellerin in Lafayette, Louisiana, who was shot in his back nine times for having a mental health crisis. It could serve as a model, when you think about what leadership the Louisville City Council did, when they said, we're gonna incentivize police to live in the city and the minority communities where they police, by by paying for their housing. And if they stay for twenty years, they can get a house. And Attorney Solomon, as you and I both know, for blue collar people and middle-class people, the best opportunity to have access to wealth is from homeownership. So they are trying to say, if these police are living in these minority communities, Brother D R, we hope and pray that they will be less apt to shoot first and ask questions later when they see a young black person because they'll say, oh, no, that's Kurt Walker's son. Oh, no, that's Carl Solomon's brother. Oh, man, that's Brother Clyburn's girlfriend. You know, they won't be so quick to shoot or brutalize us because the hope is that they will know us. And that's crucial to what we're trying to do with reform. The second thing they did, Brother Solomon, they hired twelve social workers, full-time social workers, to be on call for the nine-one-one calls. So when they get the mental health uh calls, or they get the domestic violence calls, they will have people with the police who are trained to deal with those type of dynamics, who can hopefully de-escalate the situation and look at the matter as a mental health crisis or a domestic situation, not a criminal matter like the police are so prone to do, and then use excessive force to deal with what they perceive as a criminal matter. So we, these social workers hopefully will be able to diffuse a lot of future hashtags happening in Louisville, Kentucky. The next thing they did was had a independent Inspector General who does not answer to the Police Department, does not answer to the State Attorney, but answers to the City Council, and get this, Carl Solomon, the. But answers to the city council and get this Carl Solomon, the civilian review board. And every allegation of police excessive force or police shooting, they issue a public report. Whether they agree that the shooting was justified or they think the shooting was unjustified. Now, because police have due process, that can't infringe upon whatever the state attorney does. But it is a record for the public to know. And hopefully that Inspector General, regardless of what happens with the state attorney. Because we know oftentimes they try to exonerate these killer cops. They have the power to recommend to the city council, not the police chief, the city council, that this officer need to go. And they're watching out for warning signs, even if they don't kill anybody with the excessive force. They're saying, all right, you get this uh red flag, you get this red flag. All right, we just recommend him before you kill anybody, let's get rid of this police officer. Because everybody ain't cut out to be a police officer. You know, that's the reality of it. Derek Chauvin, who put his knee on George Floyd's neck for eight minutes and 46 seconds. He was not cut out to be a police officer. I mean, he had a record number, like 18 uh excessive force complaints. But yet they hadn't gotten rid of them. Don't you think if there would have been anybody who was neutral and looked at his police file, you would have said, hey, this person is going to kill somebody? And we wouldn't have had to watch this documentary of a human being being murdered. And even more shocking, Brother D R Walker, to watch the documentary narrated by the person who was being murdered. I mean, George Floyd said, I can't breathe 28 times. I mean, he literally said, I can't feel my insides. I can't feel my legs. And then, you know, he said, tell my mother I love her. Tell my children I love them. They're killing me. I'm going to die now. And quite literally, the police offered him no humanity, no professionalism or respect. The laypeople were saying, you are killing them. And the police who were supposed to be trained to know how to preserve life. The police who were supposed to be trained to deescalate situations was escalating the situations. And it was the police themselves who did not give George Floyd the opportunity to take another breath. And so hopefully with the systematic reform that happened in Louisville, Kentucky. And oh, by the way, they also abolished no not warrants and got rid of them. So that was a big step forward. And I see Brother Grant, Ricky Lewis, greeted Brother. Um but that was a big step forward as well. And then finally, you know, transparency is the key. Transparency, transparency, transparency. These body camera videos, they said no more where they execute warrants without having body camera videos. Because I believe, Brother Solomon, that the issue here between law enforcement. And minority communities and why this keeps happening over and over and over again is because. Number one, we don't have transparency. People got to be able to see what happened. And whether the citizen did something wrong and illegal or the police officer did something wrong and illegal. They need to be number two held accountable. It can't be every time black people are accused of doing something nefarious or illegal. Even though they have no evidence, they lock us up, Brother D R Walker, and throw away the key. However, when the police are accused of doing something nefarious and we have it on video. And they still not held accountable, then that makes us not have trust. And so we have to have number one, transparency plus accountability. And that's how we bridge this divide of mistrust that exists between our communities and law enforcement. And I believe that is the solution. But until we first have transparency, we can never get to accountability. And that's what was so sweeping about what happened in Louisville, Kentucky in the pretrial civil settlement with Breonna Taylor's family.
Brother D R, if I could uh impose on one more question on Brother Crump before you introduce Brother Grant, that'd be appropriate.
Sure, my brother.
Brother Crump, we're all mad. I mean, we fighting mad. We're mad from those that are eight years old, those that are 80, and we want to affect change. Talk to us about how we do that. How do we get in the fight with you? How do we affect change on our local levels involving these uh police officers, involving these police departments? What can we do?
Now, that's an excellent question, Brother Solomon. And as Dr. King said, we all have a role to play in the struggle for equality in America. And everybody does not have to come out on the uh front lines of the marches and the protests like. Me and Reverend Al and Black Lives Matter, but you have a role to play. Whether it's using your influence to go down to City Hall and say. To your mayor and your city commissioners that I want to talk about the young black boy who was shot in the back. I want this on the agenda because just showing up to the city council meeting. Because think about it, y'all, the police kill 1,300 people a year on average. And it's only about four or five cases that we all get to know about every year. The majority of them, nobody knows about save their family and the local people in the community. I know there are some people in South Carolina, North Carolina that's been killed that nobody made a hashtag for. But we got to use our influence to say, that young black man, life matters too. And we got to continue to say over and over again, just because they say it's legal, that don't make it right. Remember, everything that Hitler did to the Jews in Germany, as Dr. King said in the letter from the Birmingham jail, was legal. But that didn't make it right. Slavery was legal, but that didn't make it right. You know, segregation was legal, but that didn't make it right. What they did to Emmett Till was legal, but that didn't make it right. So when they try to tell us what they did to Breonna Taylor, killing her in the sanctity of her own home. Having bullets mutilate her body, and they try to say that's legal, well, that don't make it right. And remember, it was 65 years ago to this day that Emmett Till was lynched. And they said it was legal, but that didn't make it right. So we got to remember that we have the power to make the change that we seek. We have this election coming up on November 2nd. And elections have consequences for all those people who say there's not a difference between Hillary Clinton and Donald Trump. Well, look at the Supreme Court four years later. I mean, he's appointed two Supreme Court justices and is on the verge of filling the vacancy left by the death of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. With a third Supreme Court justice, and this is going to have far reaching, longstanding consequences on American society. It's going to affect us for decades to come, whether he's elected president or reelected on November 2nd or not. And so elections matter. Elections matter not just on the national level, but they also matter on the local level. They matter. Who is the DA in your community? Because Brother Clapton, that district attorney is going to determine who goes to jail and who don't go to jail. He's going to determine, Brother Louis, if these killer cops go to jail for killing unarmed black people. But y'all know what? He's also going to determine your little son or your little nephew or your little niece. Your daughter, your brother, your uh sister. They're going to determine if these black people who committed similar fact patterns to white people. Are given the same benefit of the doubt, the same benefit of consideration, the same benefit of possibility. Or are they going to lock them up and throw away the key and make sure they're labeled as a convicted felon? And the local DA is normally. It determined by a couple of thousand votes, sometimes a couple of hundred votes. So if black people go to the polls, we are critical mass as who's going to be elected to that very powerful position. And you don't have to take Ben Crump word for it. You just go in the back of any courtroom in any city, in any state, on any day of the week. And you sit back in the back of the courtroom and you watch how Chuck D and Public Enemy say how they do justice. How it's been administered. And you see how they treat little black boys and girls as compared to how they treat little white boys and girls. And that's why we have to vote. We have to vote because the mayor is going to decide who the police chief is. The mayor is going to decide how that police department looks. They're going to decide if they have people who have numerous allegations of excessive force. Who keep getting promoted up the rank. Or they're going to decide if they have a police force that not only protect and serve the white community. But also protect and serve our community and don't just police us. And so this is what's at stake here. We, I I was talking to Tesla Figaro, a consultant of mine, right before this call on a podcast. It's not enough to say uh anti-Trump or we just are voting for the lesser two evils. No, we got to say that Joe Biden and Senator Kamala Harris, that they're going to offer solutions. Not based on the mistakes they may have made in the past, but they're going to put it right on their platform. That we're fighting to get the George Floyd Justice and Police and Accountability Act in the first 10 days we get into office. Because that stands for universal body cameras. Can you imagine if we had body cameras in Breonna Taylor's case? What a difference that would have made. We look at George Floyd had body cameras. They got arrests and charges. We look at Ahmaud Arbery, they got video. When you have video, it's a game changer. So we should have video in every police excessive force case. So Attorney Solomon, those are the types of reform we need and we are the change that we seek. I'll say this real quick and then I let we have the great introduction of our great first grand Vice Bossless. I was giving a speech to Truist Bank on June 10th, a five side chat with their CEO. And Carl, he said something profound to me. This old rich white man said, and introducing me uh to his almost 2,000 associates and partners at the bank. He said, in the aftermath of George Floyd, one of my neighbors, and he lives in the 6th District. You know, they based in uh Charlotte, North Carolina, Brother D R Walker. And he said, literally, he said, his neighbor came and knocked on his door and said, oh, man. Kelly King, that was his name, it's getting bad out there, man. Do you see what's going on? How they marching and riding in the streets? He said, man, we got to call somebody. And Kelly said, he thought to himself, Carl, he said, he didn't notice somebody's name. Brother Clapton, he said, he didn't notice somebody's phone number. And Brother Louis, he said, he didn't know where did somebody live. So he thought about it for a minute, then he looked at his friend and he said, you know. We just somebody that got to do something. And I thought that was profound. We are the people who have to make the change we seek. And it is within us, brothers of Omega Sappha, to do it. We can change this system. We all just have to play our roles.
Brother D R, we're going to let Brother Crump get a breath right there. You go ahead and do the introduction, sir.
Oh, sure, sure, my brother. And we are definitely honored and glad we have a visitor tonight that stopped by. Um he he take that, took that Zoom jet straight from the lovely state of California to here in South Carolina with us. And the night we we've been blessed to have our first Vice Grand Bossless, Brother Ricky Lewis. Brother Louis, if you uh please, you you're welcome to have the floor to uh say some words to our audience tonight, my brother.
Well, thank you, Brother Walk. I appreciate you. Just want to say good evenings, everybody from Los Angeles. I didn't never think I can get to the 6th District, but I get on a plane, a train, or a car. Uh but this Zoom thing will let you go anywhere you want to go, man. So it's good to be in Los Angeles. But being in the 6th District at the same time. Brother D R, thank you for your leadership. Uh Brother Crump, man, you're you're a bad man. Man, you're all over the TV, bruh. We sure appreciate you. Your grind is off the chain. Let me tell you, man, your grind is off the chain, but you keep these people on point. Uh we praying for you, we praying for your wife, your daughter, your family, praying for your health. Uh we know you out there battling, man, and we got you. Uh the brothers got you. Friendship is real. Friendship is essential to the soul, man. So uh thank you for your hustle. Brother D R, thank you for this opportunity. I'll go back on mute and get some more up there. Thank you, brother.
Thank you so much, Brother Grant Lewis, for your leadership.
Yes, sir. Brother Clapton and Brother Crump, whoever would like to take this one. Let's talk to the young brothers and sisters that may be watching this. How do they get involved? How do they get the information they need to arm themselves to try to be the change that you're talking about?
I defer to you uh first, Brother Clapton. Well, it it's 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 not a simple question. You know, um it it does take, uh it's a lifelong commitment to get involved and and to be a part of that change. You know, we have been oppressed by a system um for the better of of 500 years. It's not going to happen overnight. It takes a lot of, it takes education, it takes being involved politically. It takes being involved financially. And so we have to, it it's not just upon the young brothers. You know, those of us who have had a few years under our belt, we have to show them the way. We have to show them um some of the things that they should be involved in. So um you know, there are some things that they can do. But I really, I really think we should be taking a a better role in helping them. Uh formulate their ideas and 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 what their justice looks like. So uh to answer your question, I I would like to say that it would be for us, those of us who have a little age. To go back to some of those young brothers and to teach them uh some of the things that we know. And and help them see through some of the pitfalls when it comes to them trying to make a difference. Because I'm going to tell you, um you know, we like to talk a lot about what the young generation isn't doing. But I know a lot of young brothers who really want to make a change. They really want to see things happen for the better genuinely, but they just don't have the guidance. You know, uh it takes guidance. It takes all of us um to to help these young men and women. Uh get to a point where they can make some changes.
Brother Crump, in terms of of those younger brothers and sisters that want to run out and and get involved today. What advice can you give them and where can they get some education on what to ask for and what to do?
You know, Brother Solomon, my hope is that uh these young people would not just uh protest. But also would evolve like John Lewis, who was out there just like them protesting, but then started to seek. Uh the political offices and elected power. Uh so they can have the voice to be able to determine what is going to happen in the lives of our communities. You know, when you think about John Lewis, he was Black Lives Matter before there was such a thing. And you look at his evolution, how people, everything they talk about, young people, all the name calling and stuff, they did all of that to John Lewis. When you look back at the whole Eyes on the Prize series. But John Lewis continued to believe that he can make the world a better place. And I believe it's these young people out here who are marching, Brother Clapton, who are going to help make. Uh America be a more just society. A more just America where George Floyd has the opportunity to take a breath. A more just society where Breonna Taylor has an opportunity to sleep in peace. A more just society where Ahmaud Arbery has an opportunity, Brother Walker, to be able to run free. And not be lynched for jogging while black. Uh Brother Solomon, a more just America where all of our children have an opportunity. At equal opportunity at the American dream, uh equal opportunity at life and liberty. And the pursuit of happiness. And so I hope our young people will say that I not only want to protest, but I want to create policy. Because you see, we have to change this moment into a movement. Because we're certainly having a moment in 2020 in America. We have to change this pain that we're feeling into a sense of power. We have to transform the protest into policy that will prevent the unnecessary, unjustifiable. And the senseless killings of black people in America in city and after city, week after week. And so that is what the young people. And so that is what the young people hopefully would, uh, strive and endeavor to achieve, to replace those people who are in office. Remember after Michael Brown was killed in Ferguson, Missouri, Carl? That the young people organized and strategized and that prosecutor Bob McCullough, who refused to kill that, uh, prosecute the killer cop who killed Michael Brown, who had his hands up, uh, in broad daylight in the Campfield Avenue community of Ferguson. And everybody was saying, hands up, don't shoot. Well, because those young people organized and strategized, they were able to defeat that prosecutor and elect the first African-American District Attorney ever elected in St. Louis County. And so that's what young people can do. They did the same thing in Chicago after Laquan McDonald was killed. They elected Kim Fox, the first black person and first woman elected prosecutor in Chicago Cook County. We did the same thing in Orlando, Florida with the election of Air Missayala. Brother Walker making her the first state attorney ever elected in the entire state of Florida in the aftermath of Trayvon Martin. So young people are the key to changing this society and for the better. Because we've seen it done. That is the precedence. It happened with Martin Luther King and John Lewis and Andy Young. And it's gonna happen with these Black Lives Matter activists. I believe it completely with every ounce of breath in my body, that these young people have the conviction and they have the intellect to make America better. These young brothers of Omega are gonna lead the way. And I know I gotta get on Anderson Cooper at eight o'clock, but I just wanted to let everybody know, we gonna win this battle. Uh, and, and can I say this before they pull me away? Carl, honestly, the reason why I know we're gonna win this battle is two things. Number one, you remember in first year law school, they taught us about precedents. I mean, they indoctrinated it into our mind. They kept saying, everything has to be based on precedence. You know, we have to have the precedence of these previous rulings to decide what the, uh, court is gonna rule today and in the future, because we got to have consistency in the law. Now, me and Carl Solomon, we didn't believe that bull. Because we know based on precedence, you know, the United States Supreme Court said, we would still be slaves. That was the precedence in America. Dre Scott decision was the precedence in America. The fact that, you know, they ruled that there were no rights that a black man had that a white man was bound to respect. And so I rejected that when they was trying to feed me all that garbage that everything had to be based on precedent. But I understood what they were trying to explain to us, that based on precedence, it is a likely indicator of what is to happen in the future. And so when I think about the precedence of black people in America, I think about the precedence that we overcame slavery. I think about the precedence, Brother Walker, that we overcame the Middle Passage. I think about the precedent, Brother Solomon, that we overcame being defined as three-fifths of a human being. I think about the precedent, Brother Clavon, that we overcame that Dre Scott decision that said there are no rights that a black person had that a white person was bound to respect. I think about the precedence that we overcame Reconstruction. I think about the precedence that we overcame Plessy B. Ferguson. I think about the precedence that we overcame Separate But Equal. I think about the precedence that we overcame the Jim Crow era. And we overcame the Jim Crow Junior era. And I think about all that black people have overcome, that America has thrown at us, trying to kill us, trying to make us think that we are second-class citizens, that we would never be able to achieve the American dream. And I think about everything that we've overcame, Brother Walker. And I can say without a shadow of a doubt, that we will overcome whatever they throw at us today, based on precedence.
Amen, my brother. Amen. Brother, we know you got to run. I will tell, uh, everyone, it is always a pleasure to be in the presence of the Trey Dog from 88 Mighty Mighty Cathedral. Thank you for stopping by and sharing some time with us, especially during this busy time. And we're gonna catch you on Anderson Cooper in a few minutes.
Hey, I love you, brothers. Thank you, mighty sixth district. Thank you, Brother D R, Brother Clavon, and one of my best friends in life, the great Attorney Carl Solomon.
Man, look here, we, we're gonna make sure we do you right again, uh, reunion of brothers next time you come, when we can get face-to-face in the port city. And so, uh, we will break bread again, my brothers. Uh, we got, we gotta stay prayed up. So we gotta look forward to that day, so we can all make that reunion possible, my brother.
God bless, brothers.
Amen, brother. Take care of yourself.
You know, brothers, I just want to share real quick, man, something, um, that was on my mind as, uh, we getting ready to close. And, um, you know, a few years ago, um, I was at a political event. Excuse me. And walking with a friend, fraternity brother. And we intersected down on King Street with, uh, three, um, Caucasian white, uh, two young men and a young lady. And the young man had a very nice leather jacket. Um, I, I could tell it was, you know, one of them high-dollar jackets. It, it was a camouflage pattern ingrained in the leather. So I said to the young man, I said, hey, man, you know, I was complimenting him on his jacket. And then he was complimenting me, because I was wearing a suit. And he said, you don't look so bad yourself. And I said, you know, you don't mind if I can touch your jacket real quick? And I, and I knew it was a very high-quality jacket. So we began walking together down the street. And we passed two officers. And before any of us could say anything, the officer, one of the officers, him and I made contact as I looked to my left. And he said, you need to learn to stop harassing people. So I was about to get fired up. And luckily, the frat brother who was there, he pulled me, said, nah, Kurt, let's go, let's keep going. And I thought about it while we were sitting there at the spot we were in. And I, I, I began to bubble, man. I, I was like, how could I let that? I could tell he was 20-something. I probably have 15 years of age on him to this talk to me like that, without, without even knowing the situation. What happened was, it was another blessing. The young man had returned back up King Street, came into the restaurant I was in. And we both looked at each other in amazement like, did you see that? And he looked at me and he said, if I hadn't seen it with my own eyes, now I know what you guys go through. And it gave all of us a, a moment of reflection. And so the very next day, I, I, I contacted my councilman. And he put me in touch with the Chief of Police. And I was able to get a process going that ultimately probably resulted in some change in terms of policing measures and, uh, profiling and, and those kind of things and judgment decisions that were made that night. But I always think back to, what if I came out and, you know, got enraged? And I think about, you know, Brother Solomon, Brother Clavon, Brother Crump. They might be, have been talking about me several days later, saying how Kurt Walker was down on King Street and got choked by these two or three officers. And now somebody telling, telling my story. And, and but, but, what, what, what really gave me a little bit of clarity, but yet even made me think a little angrier was, here I was in a suit and tie and a three-quarter length coat. What's happening to little Rashawn, who's sagging? What's happening to little, uh, Leroy or Joseph, the miners, the young brothers? And I, I was thinking about some of the comments you two gentlemen made tonight in terms of what can we do, what do we have to do so that these young men got a fair chance? Because I'm lucky and fortunate enough that the fraternity has made our friendships even greater. And so if I was in some dire situation, I know I got a phone number in my phone and I can call Brother Carl Solomon. I know I can call Brother Tony Clavon. But what about those young brothers who can't call somebody? What about those young brothers who are just stuck? And we see what happens now in, in real time, on daily television. We seeing it with our own eyes, young men being choked to death. And don't even have the courtesy to resuscitate them. And that, that, that bothers me to, you know, when I look at these, you know, the Eric Garner situations. Don't even have the, the common decency after you choke the man to death. I see, I see in, uh, what's the WW, uh, WCW, whatever, ultimate fighting. These, these guys are putting chokeholds till they can't breathe and they resuscitate them. You mean to tell me the police departments can't be thoughtful enough to at least resuscitate or revive somebody after you choke them out? So, you know, I just wanted to share that, brothers, you know, this, uh, it was all my spirit. And, um, you know, I just want to definitely thank you gentlemen tonight for everything y'all did tonight, my brothers.
My pleasure. Brother Clavon, let me let you get some parting words as well, and then I'll close us out.
Well, I just want to say that it is incumbent upon all of us, um, not only brothers of Omega Psi Phi, but all of us who are able to reach into our communities and to educate those who need to be educated about the different ways that we can make progress, whether it's politically, financially, and of course, when it comes to, to justice. And so, um, we all have that duty. We all have that duty to, to reach into our communities and to help those of us who need to be helped. Um, what good is it for us to attain personal fortune if we can't share that with others? And, and so I just want to leave, uh, with the message of sharing, uh, a message of, um, us, who have the ability to, to reach and, and to care and to show others what, what needs to be done. Um, it's not easy. You know, again, we, we've been through this for centuries. It's not going to happen overnight, but it needs to happen. You know what they say about planting the tree? You know, the tree may take 30 years to grow. Well, we need to go ahead and plant it now, if that's the case. So, um, I, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, I, I do want to make sure that, uh, you do understand, Carl, that I feel the same way that Brother Crump does about your abilities as an attorney. I've heard a lot about you and, 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 you know, we're blessed to have you, uh, to be a part of what we're doing. And, um, Brother Walker, I appreciate you inviting me here. Uh, but once again, I do think it's up to us, and that's, that's the one thing I want to, uh, reiterate. It's up to us, um, to make sure that we are getting the word out. And one last thing, in South Carolina, beginning October 5th, you do not need to, to, to have a reason to go vote early. You don't have to present any kind of thing where you, you're a certain age or present something from your, from your job. October 5th, you can go to your voter registration office and you can vote early, in-person absentee. Okay? And, and that's very important, not only for the national race, not only for the, the Senate race with Jamie Harrison, but for your local sheriff races, your local mayor, your local everything. Because those are the people who make the decisions that affect us immediately. And that's all I have to say.
Fair enough. I want to leave with, uh, thank you to the sixth district, Brother D R, for putting this together and allowing us this forum and bringing on Brother Crump to be able to speak to us. Got three basic points that, um, were made to me at different points in my life that I hope can be of some help to someone. I remember when Brother Crump and I were 18 years old and we were gonna make our first counter demonstration against the Klan. Called my dad and I told him I gotta go make my, my voice be heard. I was going and we were gonna march and we were gonna do all these things and I was really riled up. And he said, son, I understand. But when you get there and they hear your voice, what are you gonna say? And I was stopped, because I had not thought about that if people listen to me, try to make social change, what was it that I was gonna ask for? So I encourage everybody, if you're going to get involved, then you should. Make sure that you understand what's worth asking for and what you should ask for, so that the change can become systemic. We don't just want a moment, we want a movement. Second thing I want to say is, we really got to get back to valuing the African-American man and woman. I hate when we have to talk about how much the settlement is in terms of talking about value. I want us to have dignity and value in ourselves, and when we see our other brothers and our sisters, so that we'll be there. We need to make sure that we do things so that everybody understands that our young brothers and sisters have value. They should see it in themselves and others should see it in them. Lastly, we got to have togetherness. We got to make sure that we not only become our brother's keeper as we do in our fraternity, but as we do in our entire community. If you see something wrong, there's not an opportunity to be silent anymore. You've got to participate. You've got to take videos to stop things that are happening. You've got to go to council meetings and speak, and you got to go vote. I told a young man once who was very upset because something horrible had happened in our community, that I didn't think he was as serious about the situation as he said he was. And he looked at me because someone had passed away and he didn't think that was something to make light of, and I wasn't making light of it. But I said, if you want justice for your cousin, the first thing you've got to understand is, who can provide it? And you've got to go see your solicitor. And you've got to understand that you've got to work with your police officers and your deputies. And you've got to take care of your community. But you've got to make sure that you understand what to affect and how to affect it. If anybody wants to look at what's a plan for policing, if anybody wants to talk about what's a strategy for making, uh, local change, uh, Brother Clavon, I'm gonna go and put you out there as well as Brother Walker, we're here for you. We're not hard to find. Look us up, we'll get you resources, we'll tell you what we know, in hopes that we can all be better on tomorrow. Brother D R, if you take us out, sir.
Well, thank you all so much, gentlemen. And as, uh, always going above and beyond, I want to thank, uh, Brother Clavon for jumping in and helping us, helping this, uh, fulfill this, uh, endeavor. And also with your leadership and your guidance, your wisdom, and, uh, Brother Clavon, I mean, Brother Solomon, for taking us through this event. We had some difficulties and challenges, but I knew and you knew and Brother Clavon knew, we were gonna pull this thing together and make it happen. And so with that being said, um, as we close out the empowerment series, definitely wanted to thank, uh, Brother Ken Johnson and Brother Greg McCoy, who have, uh, without, uh, bickering, um, you know, barking, they have, um, performed a tremendous, uh, duty and task in making sure this technology was readily available, um, each night. And I want to thank those brothers for, you know, using their gifts to make this happen for us. And, uh, finally, we got the, one of the best chaplains, I think, in the fraternity, uh, coming on now, Brother Travis Alexander. Uh, he lit the fire up this morning on a prayer call. And, uh, I want to thank him for all he does in terms of keeping our brothers and our members prayed up and making sure we are walking right on our spiritual path. So without further ado, Brother Travis Alexander, please, the floor, floor is yours, my brother.
Thank you, Brother D R. My compliments to everyone for this empowerment series. Bow your heads with me, brothers. Stony the road we trod, bitter the chastening rod. Built in the days when hope unborn had died. Yet with the steady beat, have not our weary feet come to the place for which our fathers died. Dear Lord, we thank you for this empowerment series. We thank you for the vision of our lustrous district representative and his committee to bring to the community of brotherhood and friends this timely and due month of weekly activities featuring high-level speakers. Lord, we ask that you put your blessings upon Brother Benjamin Crump, our grand counselor, as he traverses the United States, working with civil rights cases, keeping protected from any hurt, harm, and danger of the virus. We thank you for our panelists, Brother Solomon and Brother Clavon. And we thank you for our tech team, Brother McCoy and Brother Johnson, who have night after night, week after week, kept this technology going in a time of pandemic. Now be with this brotherhood as we go into district council meeting this weekend. Give us victory and help us to continue to solve and make the world a community of friends and brothers. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, gentlemen. Amen. Thank you, gentlemen, man. Thank y'all so much. See y'all on the other side.
Yes, sir.
All right.